Question to order, looking for a roll call attendance.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear.
President.
Commissioner Walz.
President.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Pawelski.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Williams.
President.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Kennedy.
President.
Chairman Shapwell. Sixth president.
All right, we have a quorum. That takes us to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Peter Born, 142 West Pearl Street. I wanted to congratulate the commissioners who won their primaries. Commissioner Bear, tough primary. Commissioner Kennedy, a little easier. Commissioner Alexander's not here. Congratulations to him. Commissioner Walz, congratulations to you. I'd like to thank the people who voted for me in that election. There was 232 of them, and I appreciate your votes. And I'm glad to see that someone is paying attention. I also want to say that the Jackson County Democratic Party sent out a late flyer, a big card, the kind you usually get in a governor's race or state senate race, for Darius Williams. So Derek Dobie's is back there behind the Jackson County Democratic Party. And people should know that there's funds available for even local races that have never been there before. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment? Last chance for public comment. Seeing none, public comments closed. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 12, 2022, moved by Snell, supported by Walz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item number five, audit presentation for Mr. Baldorman.
Good morning.
Hello, sir.
Thank you for your time today. I will try to make this one my conclusions of the presentation. So today, just want to kind of focus on overall results of the audit. Won't dive into the financial information. But just want to kind of focus on some of the things that may be a little bit different in the reports from what they were in the previous year. And then give you kind of a summary of, from an audit perspective, of what the results of the audit were. So also, I want to thank the county, all the staff, especially Cecilia, for all the work getting things done. Again, another smooth audit from our perspective, and things went well. So the big, this big report, 200 and some pages, it feels like it keeps on getting thicker, is the annual comprehensive financial report. This report, pretty much is the same. We didn't have any new accounting standards that we issued this year. There were auditing standards changed, and I did want to point out, just because the audit opinion letter, the piece that's actually ours in that report, was reorganized. Nothing major in terms of what we're doing. More about a presentation of what we're doing and how they did it. One of the nice things about it is they actually moved the opinion to the very beginning of the letter, instead of it being in the middle of the letter. So that opinion, when you look at the report, is on page 13. But it's an unmodified opinion, our clean opinion, which is what you're hoping for when you get an audit. And honestly, if we don't do a clean opinion, the state of Michigan has all kinds of issues and makes us get to the point where we give a clean opinion. So there's lots of other information. It does spell out some different things in different ways of how we're doing the reports, when you're getting the middle of page 14, 15, lays it out a little bit differently, spells it out, I think a little bit easier to understand. But that's the major change there. In terms of the actual financial results, those types of things, how things are presented, nothing much changed there. The other, the second document that you have is a separate letter. I did want to point something out because it's one of those where this letter is kind of a standard letter, has all the kind of standard communications that we have to make with those charged with governance. One of the things that changed under the new auditing standards was we are now required, as a part of our audit, to communicate with those charged with governance significant risks. And we say that, and sometimes it raises a flag. Oh, you guys think there's a risk in a certain area? Well, standards also dictate that there's certain things that we, by default, have to say is significant risk, identify and design procedures around. And those are the things, it's on page two of that letter. There's a section titled "Significant Risk Identified." And this is pretty much any letter that you will see. If this is the way that they're communicating things, it indicates that management override of control and revenue recognition were identified as significant risk. That, by standards, we pretty much have to do. Because any time, we have to design procedures, we have to look at those things, because ultimately, you have an internal, set of internal controls in place. But if management somehow tries to override those controls, that's where you have a heightened risk of misstatement or fraud, and so those types of things. And then also, revenue recognition has been identified by the AIPPA, something that we have to look at. So nothing to, nothing out of the ordinary, nothing that we specifically identified here where we said there is significant risk that we needed to address. So just wanted to point that out. And then in that letter, this is the, there's, the fact that there isn't anything in this letter is important. There usually, there could be an attachment A. Attachment A, sometimes for us, is a management letter comment, saying that we feel that we need to be addressing. There was nothing to include there. But in the attachment, there's a listing of all the new GASB standards that are out there, upcoming standards that haven't been implemented yet that might be. And there's actually been one since this, since we put this letter out. We're all the way up to GASB 101. But the one that's going to have an effect next year is GASB 97 on leases. And there's a whole new standards under the GASB where you're going to have to look at all the leases on both sides, whether it's, you have a lease where you're leasing out, for instance, space to someone else, or if you're leasing things like buildings, copiers, whatever. Those all have to be analyzed, and there's a new standard that has to be implemented. So there will be changes in the statements, most likely, next year related to that. So that's the big new standard that we'll be looking at, meeting over the next few months, to try to make sure that gets implemented smoothly for next year. Then the last report that we have is the Single Audit Act compliance report. Because you have enough federal dollars, I mean, you're well over the threshold, we have to do what's called a single audit. And this year, the summary of that, a good summary, I always like to point to people, is page 13. Because this kind of spells it out without having to read all the reports, exactly what's in there, what the results of the audit were. So there's a couple of different sections in it. The financial statement section talks about the results of our financial statement audit. So the audit of the annual comprehensive financial report. So talks about the audit report issued, as was mentioned before. It was an unmodified opinion. We're also required, under standards, to look at internal controls. If there are any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we identified during the audit, we're supposed to report those to those charged with governance. And in this report, happy to report that there was none. This year, we also are required to report compliance overall on the financials. Anything that would be material to the financial statements, non-compliance that was detected earlier, whether related to grants. And this is not federal grants, any state grants, any laws, regulations, those types of things. We be required to report those, but happy to report there was none in that area as well. And the last part of it, the bottom half of that page, is the federal awards audit. So this year, the programs that we identified as major programs and tested this year, we had three of them. We had the WIC program, which is something that we test every so often. We're in rotation. And then this year, we had the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is your ARPA funds. And then the epidemiology grant. So both of those ended up meeting the threshold this year, and were required to be tested. And we had no findings on either of those in the areas that we were required to test. So you had unmodified opinions, we have to give an opinion on compliance, and we also have to report any control issues, but we had no matters to report. So very clean audit, no findings this year. So it's really, in the end, what you're looking for in an audit for it to be clean. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Excuse me. Commissioner Pawelski.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just, I think, a few observations, more than really questions, because the things that I look at are, these are the things I'm concerned with. And I want to say it's on page 82 of the audit report. It's related to our funding of our existing pension plan. Was pleased to see that we're basically, that our assets exceed the expected liabilities of our pension plan by $45 million. And I think there's some bonds outstanding, though, too, right? Didn't we do some bonds a few years ago to fund that?
Correct.
So that's not unexpected, but it's nice to see, because some units are underfunded with respect to their pension liabilities. So, and of course, now we've seen what the market has done this year. We'll see what the coming audit report will show. It won't be quite so rosy, it seems to be, next year. I think another thing that I was curious to know, we try to maintain a particular fund balance as a percentage of our revenues. And I think in the notes to the financial statements, it was down at page 90-something, note 19, page 90 of your report. I see the general fund balance is about 10.8 million. And we're running roughly $50 million of revenue, I think, through general fund, roughly. So we're about 20%, which is, I think, within our guidance of about 18% to 24% or something that we try to maintain as a fund balance. So that, those are kind of the touchstones that I look at when I'm looking at the audit report, because although I should understand better, I'm quite sure I do not understand any better than anyone else, how that works. But I'm pleased to see those two things in my shape. And the unmodified report, and lack of points in the management letter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? I would ask, in your opinion, in reference to what Commissioner Pawelski just brought up, would you consider our fund balance to be healthy and above average compared to other counties that you audit?
Yes, I mean, it's right, within that range. I mean, I think your fund balance sets a very healthy limit, having that 18% to 24%. It's definitely a very healthy position to be in. It's always, as an auditor, tough to say what's healthy and what's the right thing. That's your job as commissioners, is to set those levels. Because there's both sides of that equation. There can be, there are lots of theories on too much fund balance. Because if you have fund balance sitting out there that you're not, too much that's out there that you're not spending, that means you're, might not be providing services that need to be, that, those types of things. So it's a fine line to draw, but I think definitely that range that you have and where you set with that is very healthy.
Thank you. Are any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it.
Do we accept? Well, it just says comments and presentation here. Do we accept? We can put on. Put on. That'll take us to item six, ARPA funding and funding update.
Good morning.
Hello, Cecilia.
So this presentation is very high level. It's just more to kind of tell you what we've obligated, what we spent, where we're at, and what we need to do going forward. So on page two, it talks about, I kind of show the dates that we received our ARPA funding. We have received the full $30 million that we can do. So, and again, those are the dates that we received them. And then on page three, our obligations. So as a reminder, there are different categories within the ARPA guidance, category A, B, C, and D. We pretty much have concentrated on category A, which was responding to the COVID-19 or the negative impact. And then category C was what is limited to our revenue loss. So category B was actually premium paid for employees, and we haven't utilized any of that. And there was also water, sewer, infrastructure. And so, again, category B and D, we have not obligated anything. But we have obligated, again, A and C. So again, so one thing I do want to point out, if you add up the amounts for the jail, for the HVAC, for the 1.1 million, and then also the, in category C, 1.8, if you add those two together, that's your $3 million that you're wanting to allocate to the jail project. So that's how that's been split out.
Cecilia?
Yes.
On page three here. The category A.
Yes.
We got jail for HVAC at 1.185 million. And then category three, for government services, up to 10 million. Jail project, 1,814. I've been told all along that the ARPA money cannot be used for financing our jail project.
So what, the part that we can use, no, okay, back up a second. So category A is for HVAC. We can use that for the HVAC. And then the rest of it, we can use it for category C, because we can use it for governmental services, we can use it for whatever we want to use it for. So we can do that. It's just, I cannot go over 1,814,578. It's limited to that.
That limit is imposed by?
The $10 million. We can only spend up to $10 million of the category C. That's all I have left.
Okay, so with the category C, you've already, we've already obligated 8,885,000.
Yes.
We've chosen to obligate 1,814,000.
To get us to 10 million.
So that totals 10 million.
Yes.
Okay, so we are taking some, 1.8 million of ARPA funds, and we are going to be putting it towards the jail construction.
That's the plan, yes. Just kind of like we did with the animal shelter.
3 million total, Tony.
3 million total for?
Yep. When you combine the HVAC with 1.8, is, I believe, lost revenue, correct?
Yes. And we chose the standard allowance for just 10 million.
So 3 million total will be going towards the jail that voters won't have to?
Has the category A obligated, we've got the IT projects, circuit court projects, and we've got the jail project. So these are, the IT projects, circuit court, jail, are those obligated yet?
No, not yet. Not yet. I set those aside, knowing that they're going to come before you, for your approval. So I didn't, I didn't want to lose them in the whole list of things.
So overall, we will be taking 3 million of ARPA fund.
Towards the jail.
Towards jail. Now, the one earmark for heating, venting, and air conditioning, is that in the new jail, or is that in the old jail that's going to get torn down?
Well, we'd have to see what happens first with the millage, I would assume, Tony. Because if the millage doesn't pass.
Right. All right, so if we've got 3 million of ARPA money that we're anticipating spending on the jail, the millage is for 50 million? Is that 50 million still the correct number? Okay, so when I've heard how much money we need previously, we need 50 million. Heard no mention of 3 million already being.
I think the number was like 52, wasn't it, guys?
It was 54, I think.
It was, yeah.
Well, that's the construction dollars. That's the construction.
That's to construct the thing. There's no guarantees of, you know, I mean, dare we say it, we've got, what, 18? How many, 18% in contingency total, I think it was. We hope that's enough to meet the construction cost increases, but we'll see. There's no guarantee.
So you're saying that the, what we are, this is a, this is a plan. This isn't history.
It's a plan right now. I just want, this is where we're at right now.
Okay, so we're anticipating putting 3 million into the jail?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham, then we'll come to commissioners.
I'm the same line of thought process, and we have a category D, infrastructure.
That's water and sewer.
Then water and sewer and broadband.
Okay, we're going to need that out there.
No, what I've read with water and sewer, those are like existing infrastructures that have been neglected over the years, and the intent is to use also funding to upgrade them. So it's not for new construction.
Then parking lot is not infrastructure?
No, that would not fall under that category.
Thank you.
Commissioner Snell.
Yeah, we need to have a start number, and that's why we did 1 mil. If we put in the 3 million, which I expect that we will, and it comes in under budget, nothing says we have to levy the full mil.
You levy up to?
We can only levy up to, so say it comes out to be 0.95, we levy 100. We can do things like that. Like any, any millage that we levy, we just.
Does it disallow the allocation to?
That would be rare for a government.
It would.
Well, we could do that.
I would hope a lot of citizens are keeping track of this, because they will want to know.
Absolutely.
All right, was that all? Commissioner Snell. You're welcome, Commissioner Pawelski.
I was just thinking, I mean, in very round numbers, if we're talking about 20-year millage, that at 5 million a year ballpark, it's going to raise roughly $100 million over the 20-year period, of which 52 millions for construction, there's going to be some for operations, because of interest costs, and there's operation costs, which is all part of the calculation you guys have done. But this is the contribution of ARPA toward offsetting, to some extent, the public's charge for the millage of doing the whole project. Which I'm, which I'm glad to see, which I've heard in my township meetings, hey, what about this ARPA money? Can't we use some of that? I'm glad to see us doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Williams, thank you.
Thank you. So my question, is in the event that we're, you know, we've started this project, and we're finding that the cost of this is a little bit more than we're anticipating, would we have the opportunity to use any additional ARPA dollars? Or are the rest allocated already?
Okay, so the $10 million is already allocated, and that's the, where we can be, there's a little bit more flexibility, we can use it how we want. The category A, we don't know how much the HVAC's going to cost. We don't know. That was just, that was my plug number from the 3 million that I was asked to account for, right? So in the HVAC, it could be more. It could maybe, maybe it's 2.5 million. And we could use more category A money to pay for an HVAC. We just have to be clear on the cost of the HVAC in the system.
Okay. So in category A, my last question, in category A, how much, how many dollars can we spend? You said up to 10 million, correct?
No, category C is 10 million.
Category C, okay.
C, yes. And we're done with that? That's gone, you'll never hear us come back and ask for more money for category C.
Okay. Thank you, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Duckham.
Once again, I'd like to present the idea that we don't have a price yet to construct this facility. We have an 18% cushion built in. And I see in one of our next categories here, subjects we're going to talk about, we expected one price, and it came in 35% more. The extra 17% comes to about $8 million extra. I am not comfortable, I said it before, when we went with the 1 mil, I'm not comfortable we're going to hit our budget. What are we going to do if we need an extra $8 million? We should have got the constructed price before we went with the projected constructed price. Because again and again, we're seeing.
I don't think anybody would give us one.
Pardon me?
I don't think anyone would give us the constructive price from six months in the future.
I don't either. I think that with not knowing the lay of land, I mean, once we get these bids in and we sign the bids, we're locked in for that, depending on cost overruns that we can negotiate.
Okay.
I think we got to start somewhere, and the first thing is to see if the public supports this project or not.
I just have a feeling there's to come back and bite us, and I hope I'm wrong.
Well, I can only block if I have to.
Okay. Put that in the record.
All right, so we're going to come back to center and let her finish her report. I'd ask you to hold the rest of your questions till the end of her report, please, commissioners.
Okay. All right. So as of today, or as well as to this way, the date that I did this report, these are the expenditures that we've actually been paid on the different projects between A and C, pretty straightforward. Then if you go to page five, this is our summary of what we've received, our obligations, and then remaining ARPA funding. So we have 9.7 million right now that's available, that's not, that hasn't been either accounted for or that hasn't been obligated. So we have until December 31, 2024, to make those decisions, and to obligate it. And then we have till December 31, 2026, to pay it. If it's not paid, we're going to have to pay it back, or it's the same thing, it's not obligated. If it's premium, it's not, we don't obligate it by 2024, we're going to have to pay the funds back. And we don't want that. So there's some decisions that need to be made. I know the HVAC is, eventually, we're going to come to board, and that's the fall under category A. I can't remember what the number is, I mean, it's like $2 million or something, maybe 30, that I know that would fall under category A. But as a committee internally, we'll need to make some decisions, and, you know, it comes before you, and just before we're thinking. But category A is very, very picky, because there are a lot of strings attached. It has to be related to COVID, you know, the COVID pandemic and responding to it, and that type of thing. But we'll, but we will make those decisions and come back and.
I'd just add on to that, we are struggling to figure out how that money is going to be.
Yeah.
Applicable, there are so many strings to it. It's like, jeez, do we qualify? Do we meet that? We do have two years to do it, but.
And I do scrutinize everything, so, you know. I am probably a scrutinizer, so.
She's good at her job.
Well, we've been worried about this since the first day.
Yeah.
I mean, about whether, whatever we spend.
Exactly. We have. It changed how many times, you know?
Yeah.
We tried very, very hard, but, you know, the category C, that revenue loss number, it was a lot harder to calculate it using the formula than I thought. So that's an example of the change that happened. And so, does anyone have any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Williams, and then Commissioner Snell.
Look, if I heard you correctly, the 9.7 million are restricted dollars.
Yes, they're all going to be category A now.
Okay, ready, answer my next question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I hate to keep talking about the same thing, but I know all who's interested in this, and I'm interested in this, and the rest of the board is, where, what is our plan but other 9.7 million dollars? Where does it have to be spent? You know, and I just, so that we can make these decisions. And have we determined that the rest of that money absolutely cannot be used for jail?
No, unless it's, unless, again, as I mentioned before, the HVAC, if it's over that 1.8 million, we can, whatever, the cat, so we've done the category C, that, we're done with that. We have allocated that amount to the construction. We have monies that we can allocate for the HVAC portion of the construction, and that's it. So right now, I have a plug in there at 1.8 to get to 33. So if it's above and beyond, whatever that number was. But if it's above and beyond that number, at 1.1, then we can use it for the HVAC.
If we can find any additional things in the construction of the jail that will meet category A, we will be bringing that forward. Thus far, the strings attached do not look lucid to that.
Yeah, and I know we can't set these numbers. Yeah, and, and I know we can't set these numbers for the jail till we see what the people vote for and then get the bids out and see what they look like. Um, and I'm not necessarily, you know, I also think we need to look at the fact that whatever we spend on the jail can't be spent on the repair of these buildings that we've kind of pushed maintenance off for years and years and years. They make sense just to go ahead and spend those monies for these projects, but I wanna see what those projects are.
Well, we still do, I just talked to Region Two yesterday, yesterday, yeah, yesterday. Uh, they're, they're progressing on the white paper coming for the rest of buildings. In fact, they've got a couple of buildings already knocked out and a couple more to go, but you'll have that soon.
And I certainly recognize the fact that they've spent a lot of time on the jail.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? That'll take us to item B. Oh, sorry, I thought you were doing that. Thank you for your report. Yep. Takes us to item B, facilities use center rooftop HVAC unit replacement, ARPA project INF dash twenty-two.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I'm gonna have Derek Geisley present this one.
Morning.
Hi, Derek.
I'm here to step forth with a motion to put forward the approval for the replacement of the rooftop heating and cooling unit at youth center under ARPA project INF dash forty-two, youth center cooling system replacement, these low bidding force mechanicals, Jackson, at nine one thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Barr.
This is, uh, ARPA money, uh, project identified earlier, INF dash twenty-two. Is this a category A or a category C project?
Great question.
It's an A.
It's a what? A? Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Williams.
No question, but just a comment, I just wanted to. Um, there is a big question, I look at every request that comes through, the where it's coming from, so I'm just glad to see there's.
And the category A is under the financial and under analysis?
Commissioners, no.
Yeah, I find it amazing that we've been able to, uh, get thirty years of life out of that equipment. So facilities has done a, a great job, but I would also suggest we probably have put more into that in parts and repairs than, than, uh, should have been done. Um, typically, your life is between fifteen and twenty years on this stuff. And, uh, I, I'm just amazed that it lasted this long.
There's been.
The use that gets out of it.
There's been more than once that Rick and his folks have had to put water hoses on different pieces of equipment during the summer to, to meet the demand because the machine was so outdated and we didn't have the money to replace it. So we're thankful that, uh, these dollars are available to, to take care of these HVACs, VACs needs, you know?
All right, this isn't an action item, gentlemen, so this will come through committee and do full. And thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. Takes us to item seven, budget update, finance. She's back in action.
There she is.
Good morning. So all of you guys should have received my draft budget, okay? You guys have received all of them, okay? So whenever we do this budget update, we're mostly focusing on the general fund. And as you can think, you know, if you kind of think about, well, we've had problems in the past is when our general fund hasn't balanced, that's when we're cutting millions, right? So we try to focus on the general fund. I start this budget process in April. Um, I kind of know pretty early on whether or not we're gonna have a problem and we kind of fortunately bring it up to, you know, bring it to, as, as here as we're at, are real early on and start making plans. But just, you know, um, for this year, I didn't foresee any problems. We are balanced, um, in our general fund, which is good. So there's been a few things that I've kind of tweaked through the presentation, but I didn't want to re-upload, re-upload the presentation, I just kind of talk on it, hopefully I'm free to do that and add things as we go along, that's okay. All right, so on page two, um, we do have a significant increase to our property tax revenue. Um, as everyone's aware, you know, our inflation rate is high, it's way above five percent. Um, and as you know, we are limited to an increase in our property taxes of the less, uh, five percent or inflation. So in this case, we're gonna be above a five percent. We've gone ahead, we've increased our property tax revenue to one point two million dollars for this year. Um, any questions on that? And it's a big number, just so you know, I worry every year about it, but I feel comfortable this year just because if we're off, then it just causes all kinds of problems, but we've, we've been good so far, so. Yes, question?
Commissioners, no.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So, um, the five percent increase is on taxable value for properties that do not change hands or not subject to a, um.
Yeah.
Uncapping, okay? But isn't, is potentially, our revenue increase could be greater than five percent.
Yeah, and I don't.
But other properties.
I'm sorry.
Uh, that change hands, their taxable value is uncapped and, and their actual value increases quite a bit because it's, it's higher than the previous taxable value. But what we're using here is five percent.
I keep.
Realizing that we might have a little bit more, you're being conservative.
I am being very conservative. I, that's revenues, I am very conservative on it. I want my revenue budget to be pretty much lesser than I think. You know, sometimes it's because we don't, somebody don't have problems, but you are right, because we're gonna run into that problem later.
If I may clarify just a little bit there, just for the benefit of the board and, and those in attendance, um, proposal A in Headley, it's individual properties, not the aggregate. So while the inflation might be nine percent, it's not a nine percent across the board for all these homes. Each individual house is looked at. So while some neighborhoods, we will get the maximum, which is five percent, because those houses all appreciated more than the five percent. Some places, they may not. If it's a three percent, that house went up three percent, we only get to three, we can't take them to the five, we only get to three. And, and as Commissioner Poleski indicated there, any house that was sold, well, it goes up to the full amount of whatever the market is at that time. Um, sometimes they equal out, sometimes they do not. Uh, literally, if sales, if we don't have a lot of sales, those properties that are below the five percent threshold drag us down. Uh, and then the other thing I'd remind everyone too, is, um, this is every year. So every year, our revenue generally does not keep pace with inflation. I mean, if inflation's three percent, you know, if we don't get to three percent, we get something less because a house may have only appreciated for one percent. And while at the same time, all our costs generally fuel things like that that we buy, utilities and the like, go up with inflation. So it's, uh, every year, and when they first did proposal A back in ninety-four, you know, everyone thought, well, it's just a little increase, a little, little loss every year. It is a little loss every year, but ninety-four was a long time ago. Those little losses have added up to significant. The county, every year, receives a little over four million dollars less than it would have if proposal A was never done. I'm not against proposal A, I just want to point out the fact that we are operating with four million dollars less than we would have operated otherwise because of that loss.
Okay, I believe the commissioners had some questions, but I don't remember. Okay, commissioners, no.
Yeah, to follow up with what Commissioner Poleski said, um, being in real estate, I'm seeing the markets slow down. I'm seeing actual price drops on property out there for sale rather than people overbidding. Now we're seeing underbidding. Uh, I remember back, uh, I don't know, was it ten or eleven when the legislature came in and said, you're gonna cut these assessments because these homes aren't worth what they're assessed at. And, uh, I think we should be very conservative in our estimations of what's gonna happen because I don't think we're gonna get to that point where we were in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, because there's a different set of circumstances, but, but it's something to keep an eye on.
Commissioner Duckham.
It, it, as I see this, it, yeah, we're, have, we have significant budget increases in revenue. But we also know we have very significant inflation. So we're really going backwards again.
Every year.
Yes. So it, it looks like it's a great thing here, it's gonna help, but we're still getting hurt.
Every year.
Thank you.
All right, so on page three, we kind of start talking about expenses. Um, and again, I'm only talking about significant things, um, that are affecting the budget. Um, we do have, um, even though our union contracts, not all of them have been signed, we went ahead and gone to have, and we do have a wage increase, including the step increase of the five hundred thousand into the general fund. I do have an estimate that whenever, in total, countywide, including JDOT, the total increase is about one point one million. Um, um, so that's kind of where we're at with the wages and step increases. Um, any questions on that?
Commissioner Poleski.
So, oh, so I want to make sure I understand, when we talk about the five hundred thousand dollar increase here, this is as to general fund, it's not taking into account the JC dot, that's under active.
Other than, that's another deal.
Totally different thing, but in total, countywide, we're looking at one point one million dollars.
Gotcha.
In total.
Okay, thank you.
This is just the general fund portion. I have a little sticky note just for information purposes. Um, our benefit, um, not, even, we've been told right now, our insurance, we're looking at a minimal, well, there's a big story about insurance, but what I've been told to include is twenty percent increase in insurance. And at first I was like, oh my gosh, are you kidding me? No, they weren't, so, um, but, but let's be honest, though. Um, I, it's not a surprise, okay? Last year, we had a net increase of three percent. And the year before, I think it may have been five. So, um, I do, um, have taken a couple of years, knowing that this is probably gonna happen, which is now where we're at, taking some of our, um, their cost forfeitures. And what that means is, um, we have employer matches on our DC plans and also on our retirement health savings plan. And employees have to be here for a certain amount of time, like maybe four or five years, in order for them to receive that full match. What we've been seeing over the past couple of years, especially since twenty twenty, and there's been a huge turnover of employees, and so the forfeitures have been growing. So I, so what I've been doing the past couple of years is kind of throwing them into our health fund to have extra, to build up that fund balance. So what I'm trying to say is that, yes, it's high, it's very high, but I think by the, by, you know, by the time this year is done, we close this year, we know how many employees are actually taking the health insurance, I'm gonna be able to use some of those forfeiture dollars, maybe two hundred thousand of it, to help lower this cost that we're seeing hitting this, you know, countywide. Um, so I just want to kind of share that, there is a little bit of a plan they've been kind of working on to help with that. Any questions on that? Okay, and I was gonna to also type, so, um, including JC dot, and again, this is an estimate, we're not done, it's just an estimate, but including JC dot, we're looking over about two million dollars countywide increase in health. This is health insurance, employee health insurance and retiring health insurance.
Commissioner Poleski, thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry to be, um, verbose today.
I appreciate your verboseness.
Verbosity, yes. Not to be extra verbose. So what I, the, uh, the way I'm looking at the presentation, we got about a one point three million dollar projected property tax increase and then we're looking at, on the next page, here's probably how we're going to have, how that's going to be spent. Uh, I'm seeing a half a million dollars in wage increases, general fund, and one point one million in increased healthcare, maybe offset by a reduced employer retirement plan contribution. And basically, that speaks really for the property tax increase over and above whatever we had originally planned in this budget.
It's more, it's more.
Yeah, well, it's more, okay.
It's again, a little bit of loss every year.
Yeah, so that, that, am I reading that, I'm reading the presentation properly that way? Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure I'm kind of.
I'll have some interjections in if I can, too. Um, and then the other thing, which is a positive, we did have a decrease in our retiree, uh, in retirement employer contributions, DB. So with our DB plan, um, we actually, um, in total, decreased for the plan, and this is just the county, it doesn't include JC dot, JC dot has a different amount, but the decrease was over three hundred and six thousand dollars, um, because the markets have been so good. Um, so, no, in total, the total decrease is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred. Uh, that, no, I'm looking at from budget to budget, okay? So our DB reduction is a little bit higher than the act, and that has, a lot of it has to do with the allocation between one year and another year, okay? But, so that was a positive, we did have some savings in our DB plan. Our DC, we have a reduction just because of turnover, people, I, I saw this a lot comparing one year to the other year. We have retirement, one, and that happened in, um, in twenty-two. And then we also have people leaving, people come in a lower step, therefore our DC contribution's lower. You know, things like that, there's, I can't take one budget and compare it to the other, they're apples, they're not apples and apples, you know, because there's a, the employee mix is a little bit different. But at the end of the day, this is where we're at with that, um. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Barr.
Thank you. On a few, on a few categories here.
Uh-huh.
You've listed this, this cost, but then when you add JC dot into it, the cost is different. And that different amount is in, in print here. So why have we chosen to separate JC dot out, um, of some of these categories?
Okay, JC dot has a totally different accounting software than, that I have, so I have to do it that a way. Um, and also, the other thing too, is we're only looking at general fund right here. I'm just giving you information countywide. Um, JC dot, actually, they're, um, that, that's, that's why, is because their accounting system is totally different. They pay their own bills, you know, and then I just, but that's why. I'm just trying to give you information.
But obviously, they do influence these numbers.
Countywide, they do, mhm, yeah. And they did have a reduction too, um, JC dot did in their employer contribution for, for twenty-three. I just don't have it written down right now. I think it's like half, I don't remember.
Okay, even if they've got a different accounting system, I guess my preference would be to see the, the total numbers.
Yeah. And we can do that going forward, I just.
This is a general fund.
It is, right, this is.
We have a whole lot of other funds.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep it as simple, high level for you, um, just because there's a, there's a lot that I could get into with detail. Um, but I'm.
Hundreds of pages.
More letting you know that is a positive in the sense that our DB plan, in overall, countywide, between twenty-two and twenty-three, the employer contribution's gone down and we have some savings.
Okay.
All right, um, on page four, I do have a couple of departments that I do want to point out where we did have some increase in cost. Um, emergency management, it's only eleven thousand dollars, but for this department, it is significant because he doesn't have a lot, um, and it is new. Um, and this is a one-year contract for the county's national certification system. And in the past, they had the homeland security grant paid for this, but the homeland security grant, um, has declined over the last three years. So emergency management, meaning, uh, the county has picked up nine thousand dollars of a twenty thousand dollar cost. Actually, no, we picked up eleven thousand, the city's picking up nine, or a total of twenty thousand. So this is something new that I wanted to bring to the board.
Thank you.
And then the next one is the medical examiners. Um, I have some information, we can get in a little bit more detail for them because they do, they have seen an increase in cases of like over thirty-one point six percent of ME cases in their office. And it actually started back in, they sent me a table here, let me find it. Back in, um, twenty twenty-one, so I went back and I did have budget amendments for twenty twenty-one. I'm gonna have budget amendments for twenty twenty-two also for the increases in their cases. Um, but for twenty twenty, they had, um, total ME cases of four hundred eighty-two. For twenty twenty-one, they jump up to seven hundred. And then for twen, and then for twenty-one, then twenty-two, as of twelve thirty-one, they're already at three ninety-eight. And just asking her why their cases have increased, her biggest, their biggest reason has to do with, um, people aren't going to the doctor and then the, and also the, the doctors are not wanting to sign off on the death certificate. So, and it's, um, and her point is too, that, you know, it's not their choice to, it's all based on the state, so.
If the doctor doesn't sign off on it, by all. If the doctor doesn't sign off on it, if he has to go to the medical examiner, he would have to sign it. And that would add to our caseload.
Yeah.
Why is that? What's changed?
The doctors don't want to sign off on it.
Yeah.
It's a good question. That's the doctors.
So I just wanted to show that is why, why there's an increase in their cases and why we're increasing the cost of that.
They're not sure if they're, they're not actually sure they're dead?
They're not sure why they, what it comes down to is they're not sure why their, the cause of death. We're signing off on the death certificate to the cause of death. And, you know, we can theorize, I have my own thoughts on that and COVID and everything else. But the fact is, they are not signing off on them, therefore, they have to go to the ME's office, he has to do it.
Yeah.
We'll leave it at that.
Right, so we're trying to adjust the budget to where it's more reasonable as to what they're seeing, so I'm not having to do budget amendments during the year. And one thing I wanted to bring up, there was a question on what operational supplies was for the ME. So here you go, saws, body bags.
Thanks, I know.
Gowns, so those are operational costs, things that they have to do in order to rent a morgue. So that's what that is, so.
Those are expensive saws, too.
Yeah, they are. Yeah. So, and so I list those increases over the past next two pages, are there any questions on those increases? It's just more to get their budget more in line to what they're seeing. And then on page six, we can go ahead and jump over to capital. So we are continuing transfers in from the health department and also for other funds that have fund balance available to us. And so the extra fund balance that we are receiving from the health department is helping us pay for our capital.
Let me jump in on that just briefly, just for the board's understanding. When we, when the general fund, general fund is the overall fund that provides funds for all these other funds, you know? Government, county, gotta love it. And so when we send them a check, to a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollar check to, say, a health department or some other department, and they only use 80,000 of it that year, well, that 20,000 stays in that fund. Over time, that fund will start to accumulate money, and so we will kind of draw it back out, and that's what she's referring to. It's not like they're, we're stealing their money, no, no, it's money we gave them that we're just drawing back out.
Right, and for the health department, this is, this is related COVID money, too, that they, you know, that they had received and they weren't, they didn't need it necessarily for their operations, for example. So that is funding our capital right now, so I just want to make that open for everybody. It's not extra general fund money we have in order to fund this capital, it is money that we are receiving from other funds in order to do that.
Our capital fund monies, supply of funds, money for capital funds is gone. Remember, the delinquent tax property, that's kind of gone, or FEL case put that to the cabos for that. So we will be struggling, one more struggle, and that is capital now. We didn't have that problem in the past, but we do now.
And that's also whenever I'm doing budget amendments and it looks like we're going to be, have enough fund balance, for example, that's what I did last year. We were good with our fund balance, I, you know, I put money, that increased our, our fund balance, actually. But any other time, likely to share, if we have extra money, I'll throw it over into the capital fund, just to start building it up and have it available. Especially for emergencies, we have some money coming that way. So, go ahead.
I'm sorry to beat a booted horse here. But with respect to general fund, we've just dedicated a couple hundred thousand to the Leone Road project, and we're about to talk about 1.1 million for Blackman Township match, and that's GF money, right?
And so, the Blackman Leone money, if I may speak, we did receive some SRI money, the, you know, the partial litigation for 2022 that we could use towards that, but it wouldn't hit our fund balance, you know what I mean? Does that make sense? So I just want to share that. I don't want to hit our fund, but if we need to, we, you know, it's, you know, it's.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to that item.
Right, but I'm just more, I am.
We're talking about budget amendments.
I know.
That's a big budget thing.
This is just a budget presentation, not amendments.
It's just a budget presentation. And so right now, Commissioner Plesky, what I do have at SRI money in right now is capital. So that, the money that I was talking about, SRI. So if we, as, as a board, you decide we need to go forward with the Blackman Leone, I'll just do a simple adjustment and move it from capital over to transfer it to JC DOT. So the money is there cash-wise for 2022 in order to do that project. It's just whether or not, you know, as a, what you need to do. I'll move on. I'm just more sharing.
Commissioner Williams.
I love this stuff.
I think Commissioner Plesky and I are thinking the same, so I'll hold my question for now.
Thank you, sir. All right, carry on.
Okay. Is there any questions on the capital that are listed at all?
Commissioner Barrett.
I do have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Facilities, 90,000 for two new GMC three-quarter ton trucks.
I have information for you.
Hopefully, there are not a lot of extra options included in that. I mean, I don't think they need to have electric seat, heated seats, like some trucks have. Special trim packages, I hope they're more of a basic model.
I, I, you know. I think it's just bare bone minimum. And I do have some information as to why they're needed. The two oldest trucks are 2002, 2004. They have ongoing issues with motor, transmission, brakes, lots of rust, the floorboards falling out with multiple mechanical issues. And then the current skid steer is a 2000 and has ongoing mechanical issues with lots of rust due to high salt usage. It sounds like they're.
Thank you. So, so while we're on that topic, although they're obviously depleted assets, what do we do with those used vehicles? Do we auction them? And that money would go back into the general fund?
It would go back into equipment.
Capital, excuse me.
It would put back into equipment so we can use it.
Okay, thank you.
Because this is money transferred out from the general over to capital. All right, anything else?
And GIS, we just, we set aside money because of, what is it, every four to five years, we fly over at a cost, great cost?
One thing that is new that I wanted to bring up is, I think it's important, if we can, we should, and I hope your board approves, the information technology, the 150,000 towards future technology replacement. Because right now, we have the ARPA funding that is, has been paying for this. So I think it's an opportunity for us to go ahead and put money aside for, once that, once the, those contracts are over, we'll have money available to replace our, again, so. Just for planning purposes.
Commissioner Barrett.
So you're taking 150,000 dollars of general fund budget, and you're going to put that off into a separate account for future technology replacements?
Yes, yes, so we're not scrambling and stressed out whenever we can't replace something.
So we're taxing citizens this year for technology that'll be some future year?
And we're setting aside money.
We're trying to be, we're trying to be, we're trying to be, planning, be able to be planful and not reactive whenever we have emergencies. And we can have the money available to whenever we need to replace whatever stuff Michelle uses to fix the money.
I've got a, I've got a further question on that, then. The, where's my numbers? I've got here, I've got to find the right document. It's the last document in this pile. Anyway, I don't have the right number at my fingertips, but I told our prosecuting attorney who requested $400,000 for what I thought was needed personnel, and he was told, sorry, we don't have the money for that. Now we're taking the money, we're setting it aside in a different account for some future expenditure. I would rather see this money spent right now, providing the prosecutor with the staff he needs. So when we've got the prosecutor's office, the drain commissioner's office, that have got requests in for funding, instead of telling them, no, we don't have, we can't find the money, it makes no sense to me to put 150,000 off in some separate savings account.
My response to that would be, if the board agrees with you, that's what we'll do. If they do not, we will not.
Just keep in mind, as I had mentioned, too, this is being funded with a transfer, extra COVID money available, fund balance from the health department that will eventually dry up. So once that money dries up, then our capital is going to dry up. So if we go ahead and budget for the prosecutor's office, then we're going to have a problem later because that money won't be there. I mean, if you think future-wise, does that make sense? No?
Well, anything that you don't pay for now, you can say that that money won't be there in the future. Well, do we have a future need or do we have a current need?
Okay, Commissioner Snell.
I'd like to thank you for thinking ahead. One of my things that I've wondered here, talking about, we keep kicking cans down the road. Need to find a way to stop that. Some of those ways we do it, you know, in business, failure to plan is planning failed. We need to think about our needs down the road, not just this year. Technology's here, so that's going to be expensive again. There's going to be big expenses on that. $150,000, I think you say is nothing, but that'll, that'll fund one attorney. So. I'm happy with this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want things to be an emergency, I want it to be more than it can be in an emergency, does that make sense?
And that was pretty much the end, as I look at the next page, correct, or?
Right, if you don't make 150,000 dollars, it's a lot of money, owe it to somebody. I'm paying off my house.
Well, Cecilia, thank you very much for your work, your expedations today, I appreciate it. Doing a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item eight. Excuse me, yes. You're lagging.
Sorry.
Item eight, lagoon plan, Cascades Park presentation, hello Angela.
Good morning, good afternoon, so we don't have to be in the front of the room.
You can move around the room if you need to.
Oh, I can dance. We have our iPad, so she can see your presentation. I'm going to let Amelia give the presentation. We did it in June, the parks board, so we'll summarize where we are and our next steps. And I think have a little bit of discussion, possibly, to help the mic, but. Thank you all for being here, you know, you have to be here, so thank you. So this morning, like Angie mentioned, I'm going to try and just reiterate what was presented at the parks board in June, and you're all aware of what was said there, and then what brought us here today, and what motions are going forward, the plan that we have at this point, and then the progress that we have made. So, we presented to the parks board in June, three different options, as we saw after the conclusion of our phase one study of the Cascades Park. We saw moving forward that we could remove the plate that has been a hot topic around the area, so we'll do that, lower the water level elevation, cut and dry. Option two would be to remove that plate and then dredge the entire water course. So we're talking that upwards lagoon and then the golf course stream path. And then three would just be to dredge the top lagoon. So the motion was made at the parks board to follow that option two, that would be to remove the plate and then dredge the entire water course. That was recommended to the board commissioners for consideration, and to involve all related agencies, some township, Eagle, City Jackson, go on such words. So in this consideration, we looked at the pros and cons of these three different options, that being cost, timelines, effect on the environment, how well they address the original issue that was brought to this by the residents, and then any possible outcomes that could come from that. So that was where we were recommending a phase two study to understand how low the purpose of water elevation could impact the residents nearby and the park as a whole. We have my, some concerns about lowering that wire level and that creating voice base underneath the residents. Talking to consultants and continuing conversations, they haven't expressed, expressed an explicit worry of that, but it's something we want to be, we want to be cognizant of. And in addition, there are known areas of contamination from previous gas stations, we've seen underground storage tanks. We want to make sure that we're not possibly going to be pulling those contaminants to the residents. But like I've mentioned, the consultants that we have talked to at this point have not expressed as much of a worry as we would have. So that's comforting for us, to name the experts and us, trying to do our due diligence. So, that phase two study, we had the phase one study that we, for, for lack of clarity, we will say that we've kind of tied that up at this point. We're still working on collecting data, making sure that what we have seen this last year is still representative of what we are seeing, that there isn't some sort of anomaly that we've missed, or that we are including all this. So we're continuing with that, but for our data, that's what we've been looking at, is this last year. We have to do a wetlands delineation for our primary decision with Eagle. We want to make sure that in any of these situations where we are impacting waters of state or the wetlands, that we understand the potential areas of impact, so that we know how to mitigate for it, or to consider it in our consideration as far as options and possible solutions. Then for anything with dredging, we have to do sediment testing. We need to make sure that for that depth of material that we want to remove, that we're not bringing up any contaminants from that bottom, unsettling them and causing more problems downstream, that could be a health and safety hazard. And then that phase two study that I just mentioned, going through that, making sure that we're not going to be causing problems down the line. And then finally, dredging, which is going to be a pretty big price point. We've heard different ranges on that, depending on what we hope the scope of dredging to be, anywhere between 3.8 to 8 million dollars. So it's not a small price tag, but could possibly offer a comprehensive solution on the board. Actually, part of this, I'm hoping that you all have access to the presentation on the board stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm looking at the cost page at this point, just running through that. With those three different options, there's different requirements. We're talking about just removing the plate, we're going to still be impacting that wetland, but we won't necessarily be dredging and don't need the sediment testing that's related to that. With that option two being that larger plate removal and dredging, all those requirements will be needed to make sure that we check all the boxes and we're not doing any, being negligent and causing issues for the environment or for the public. And then option three being just dredging those top lagoons, the amount of sediment testing would likely be less because we're not looking at much of an area, however, that, there's still a heavy price tag with that just because of dredging and a lot of, a lot of uncertainty that has attached at this point, not having a core number of what dredging costs would be, but that is pending that sediment testing that we have to do. Once we do that sediment testing, we'll be able to understand the methods of disposal that require. As there's contaminants, we have to be more cognizant of how it's treated, making sure that we're not disposing of any hazardous material on site that could seep into the park. So we want to make sure that we're being safe with that. And then if we are just doing that, that top lagoon, that phase two study, we won't necessarily be looking at lowering the wire level, so we're not as concerned about causing any utilitarian impact to those residents nearby or possibly pulling over those contaminants. But like I've mentioned, we haven't heard a resounding concern from experts that we have talked to, but it's built up as what we are pursuing to make sure that we are doing what's best for the community and for the park. Okay, so on that next slide of things to consider, I've run through a lot of it already. But just to reiterate, that phase two study, we want to make sure that we're doing our best for the park and the residents. Sediment testing, the cost of that will help determine the disposal method. And then we have a better idea at this point of what is required for sediment testing. When I mentioned the cost on the previous cost slide, that actually has been an overestimate of what we have received for, quote, for sediment testing. We have received a quote from SMEs for just over 30,000. So previously, when we had thought that 60,000 was our little point, hearing half of that was a bit of a celebration, at least for me. For you all. As we continue to talk with SME, that price has continued to go down, so, you know. And then looking at considering between option two and option three, whether to dredge the entire water course or just the. or just the top lagoons, keeping in mind that dredging those top lagoons do make up about three quarters of the total of those dredging. So, either way, it's still a heavy amount of dredging that has to be done. So, at this point, we have already completed the wetland delineation with Tritora. That was for eleven thousand three hundred. And then, the sediment testing has gone off the bid. We did one bid back from SME for just over that thirty thousand of what you see there. We are still in conversation with those consultants for that Phase Two analysis. We've received various ranges as far as proposed cost for that or potential cost for that. And we're trying to narrow in on where there is that discrepancy and what they would require as scientists, as experts, to consider to give us a level of confidence and knowing that we can move forward with this or if there's other things that we need to be cognizant of in proposing to lower the water elevation. And then, we're continuing to have discussions with Eagle all this while. They are probably tired of me at this point. I'm very familiar with my email, email address, but that's okay. So, we're in their business right now, which has put some, some stalling, not stalling, you know, where it's slowed down the process as far as compensation slowed down, but we're making sure that we're meeting their requirements. We've got many different parties we go involved so that we get a comprehensive idea of what they're looking for and make sure that we're meeting all those checks for the health and safety of the people and the park. And then, there's a beautiful picture on that last slide I have right there.
So, the pending approval of the thirty thousand eight hundred and forty, that's pending this board's approval?
Uh, committee.
Committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to remind everyone, we were given the one million dollars, which had a hundred thousand sign for engineering, so the, the numbers that you see for soil testing and for wetland delineation are coming out of that hundred thousand.
Okay. Administrator Overton, just for the benefit of this group here. Where are we getting the four or eight million? Everyone keeps looking at me going, hey, where's that money coming from? I'm like, oh.
So, very early in this, in the consideration since we've been working through that Phase One study, we started reaching out to dredging consultants. Surprise, surprise, and mostly at the coast, who would have thought? But, trying to get their best understanding of what a project like this would mean for dredging. And because we don't know what the bottom contaminants of those, or if there are contaminants at that bottom sediment of the lagoon, it's hard to understand what they would need to do as far as their, the way they treat the sediment, how they dispose of it. Because ultimately, that mobilization of that sediment disposal, chucking it off, that's going to be a hefty cost. So, they're trying their best to kind of narrow in on that, but not having complete information. Potentially, we can dispose of it on site and add another flooding killer suddenly. We don't know that until that testing is done.
Kind of if there's mercury in the hill, right?
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah. If there's something bad in it, we're not letting it seep back into the water.
Right.
So, that's just on disposal.
Commissioner Williams.
So, well, thank you for doing this. I have several questions, but I'll just be brief and just kind of hit some of the bigger target ones. So, in terms of the, the price for dredging, in my conversations with the Drain Commission and a few other individuals, they were thinking that the price would be much lower than this, I mean, between maybe one to two million. So, now we're looking at between four and eight million, is that a good question?
So, I, to be completely transparent, I'm not wholly positive where the one to two million is going to come from. Even back as far as two thousand ten, earlier than that, we were looking at anywhere from two point five to five point two million.
Oh, okay.
So, it's.
What was that, two point what?
Two point five to five point two. At least I had based on the documentation that was requested, well, documentation for grants that were requested from various entities of government. So, that's me just compiling those receipts, trying to understand really what this was like in the last forty years. Because the plans for the dredging were actually drawn up in, uh, two thousand ten, in two thousand ten, and we ripped it out, Jack ripped it to them. And we've actually got consulting prices because it's cheaper to have him just update them for this middle, this, this go around versus having them redrawn. So, we're using the plans that they did in two thousand ten that were the two point five to five point five million cost estimates. So, I don't know the, where the one to two million.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So, in the event that, you know, we continue with this project, and if there is a possibility, as the, after we pull the plates and dredge, again, changing the, the water levels, if you will, I just want to make sure I'm just articulating this correctly, so if I'm wrong, please tell me. So, that would then possibly cause a different soil runoff and things and creating the houses to be a little more imbalanced. In, in the event that that may be a possibility, and we need to have the homeowners in the area, do we need to do like a special mailing, say, hey, these are the possibilities, just so that they know? I'm just trying to think of ways that, you know, we're protecting ourselves as a county and not potentially walking into like a lawsuit or anything like that. Is that something that we need to do or?
I would think if that's the result of the Phase Two, that yes, we would have to consult an attorney and figure out documents to drop with the landowners. I, Mike, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we don't like surprise people. But, you know, this is, I'm still on how to pay for this. I can tell you the county does not have the money. This is, will be a drainage project, be very likely, and which would involve the Drain Commissioner, of course, and he would have to create a board of determination, that's three people he selects that are not part of the drainage project. And then, those three people would evaluate all the data that we are gathering now, make a determination as to whether it should be a project or not. And if they declare a special assessment, and goes forward from there, of which we would be a part of and any other property owner in that area would be a part of. And there's always, you know, the public hearings in the process for special assessments that would all be part of that and notification requirements.
We don't pay taxes on our part.
No, we would pay a special assessment. We do pay special assessment costs, absolutely. We pay a number of them now, drains as well as road projects the city has done that are in front of our property and things like that, so, yeah.
It comes from general fund then or?
It, uh, yes. General funds generally where it is. And everything else, think of, think of, think of all of our fund guys. The general fund, when I say general, is because it's, you can use it for a lot of different things. The other funds are very restrictive. We can't take money from, you know, the animal shelters, millage and use it for anything but animal shelter. So, everything comes from general fund if it's not part of a defined millage.
And then, my, my last question for you, then I'll email the rest of them now, is I think you talked a little bit about possibility of what could happen downstream. So, if we pull the plate, the water's got to go somewhere. So, have we talked, have we done more homework in regards to what that would possibly look like as we are towards downstream?
We've been looking into it. Ultimately, the, we can tie that in with our Phase Two analysis to give an understanding of that. A lot of that's going to be dictated about the, by the golf course infrastructure that's there, whether it's culverts, ridges, what have you, dams. So, those are going to be depend on that. Each downstream structure is going to control the upstream of it. For sake of magnitude, though, in removing the plate, we are talking about six to seven inches of water. So, it's not, it's not nothing.
It's not a complete, just pull it all the way out.
It would do gradual.
Gotcha.
I mean, it's holding back six to seven inches of water right now, from one side to the other. So, it's not three feet that we're, we're closing. Now, if the discussion is made that we want to lower everything through these, through dredging, through modifying the infrastructure, that's a different conversation, having to be a part of it. But, at this point, it is just that, that six to seven inches that we're, we're talking about. So, it's not, we're not talking a tsunami.
If I may jump in there, the engineers can't say it, but I will as a non-engineer. I've looked at it too, and, you know, think of the lagoons. It's a big pond. It's not a lake by any means, and we're talking about pulling the plate up and letting water run down into what is otherwise a ditch, clash, creek at some point. We can control the flow. It won't be a problem, I don't believe, downstream at all.
Okay.
And Eagle will have say in that. So, I was part of a, a similar project in Marshall, and they regulated how many inches in the timeframe you had to let it run with that, you know, an inch lowering. So, it'll be a timeframe that they let us draw down. And then, the other part is, let me check. Eagle.
Welcome to my world.
Oh, um, in two thousand ten, the plans that were drawn up, Eagle dictated removal of structures in the golf course, too. So, they'll also look at your concerns as far as what structures need to be upsized or removed. I believe there was removal of a couple only leaving two, two in place. So, that'll all be ironed out as we work through the process with Eagle if we move forward.
One more question, and I'm going to be. At what point in this phase do we begin to remove?
That's something that Eagle has to.
They have to say that, okay.
Yeah, so it's part of the permitting.
Okay.
So, that's where the, the oil and delineation. They've recommended us doing everything as one permit as opposed to two permits. So, that's, that's also dependent on the sediment testing as well. So, we can couple that all together and get that sent to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioners now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I know a little bit about leaking underground storage tanks. And if we've got contamination from that that's gone into the lagoon and we find that or other manufacturing contaminants in there, will we still be able to dredge? And then, what would we increase in cost be for that? Because if we've got contamination to dispose of that, that's not cheap.
Yes, you can dredge. It's just the method then typically it has to go into a, a special filter sack before it can be taken off site and it's disposed of at a landfill that's authorized to take the material. So, we can dredge. The cost, you know, unit price is like. Unit price, I don't know, and that's where the contractor's consultants were giving us their best guess, that eight million.
Okay, so that would put us at the.
Yes, that's what I thought considered.
And then, you know, we. I'm fairly new to the board. I don't know why all the reasons we're looking to do this, but what are the major reasons we're looking to do this?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry that you've missed my thirty-four years of long PowerPoint. I know the board really enjoys them, but this was originally brought to us because there were reports of residential basement issues on the east side of Cascades Park. They're seeing high water levels seeping into their basements. It was reported that eleven different residents were having that issue. Over time, we've had regular contact with three of them, just through taken circumstance meetings, what have you. So, in trying to address why groundwater was high in the area, we're trying to understand the part that the park's water features played in that, and the surface water elevation of the lagoons, to see if one was driving the other, if it was the park's features. We're raising groundwater levels enough that we're talking about, of course, the lagoon level staying high enough, that it was flooding out the residents. So, we're trying just to understand what factors were playing part to the water issues they were seeing.
And I think we've looked at some other mitigating factors there, like how they're disposing of their own waters off their roofs and some drain issues that may have been caused by the city.
Uh, I, the city had drainage structures that go into the lagoons. And the rough drains, I believe, have been tied into the system now, the ones that we were concerned about. They were not tied into just one one. But, yes, those were factors that were analyzed in this process.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrett.
My item on your chart here, we got the remove plate, pros and cons. On the dredging, your first one, improve the lagoon's ecosystem. You could add that comment to the remove plate and dredge.
What I was referring to in that pros or cons was how well the water body would be able to circulate. So, in removing the plate, we'd be lowering the water level and we'd possibly be choking it sort of at that outlet point. It wouldn't do the same depth, so it wouldn't have that same depth to generate. So, but to that point, it, I guess it depends on how we envision the project. We could say that Marchland's also improving the ecosystem, very high test, improving the ecosystem. You're right, it is, it is my perspective.
All right. The removal of the plate, that's just going to be a gross adjustment of seven inches in the water level. And that's all you get. At the Parks Board meeting, I brought up an idea, got some, got support. I don't think it was in the motion, but instead of just yanking the plate out, dropping the water seven inches, we place it with an adjustable plate. Then, if you want to go down one inch only, you can adjust it. If you want to go down three inches, you can adjust it. And if you take it all the way down to seven, then you realize, eh, that's, that was too much. Well, with adjustable plate, you can bring it back up to five. But, at this point in the discussion, that's a tiny cost factor. But, I think the project would be well served with an adjustable plate instead of just remove it. And, and that's all you got.
And we have that in our notes for discussion with Eagle because they'll dictate whether that can happen, how, what the variations, when those variations can happen, that type of thing. So, we'll talk to them.
All right, so you haven't lost track of that. Page titled, Things To Consider. If we drop the water level in the lagoons, currently the groundwater table through a large region of the county there is kind of at a static condition. There'd been some discussion if we lower the water table in the lagoons, how is that going to affect the polluted site from the gas station and all the pollutants that's in the groundwater there? If we lower the groundwater at the lagoons, is that contaminated plume going to start flowing towards? Have we done any studies? Do we know about how this will impact the polluted site?
That is the main concern of the Phase Two analysis.
The main concern of.
The Phase Two analysis that we're proposing, that's what we've been talking to consultants to try and do. And because as we've seen it with our data, there appears to be a groundwater divide under Southwest app that is holding the contamination site in its place. And so, our concern is that if we do drop that up, will it be dripping things, dripping things enough to the wet that will pull the contaminants towards the lagoon and the residents? So, that's something that we're talking to consultants about to do that study on. So, we have a better understanding of what that is.
All right, so it's still in consideration.
And we got two responses. We're waiting on a third. Once Mike resigned, we went to try to find another team member to look at that for us. It's just, the two that we have range extremely from like six thousand to forty-four thousand. So, it's such a big difference in price that we're trying to talk with them and understand what one thing, the other's not, that type of thing, to make sure that if we go with the six thousand, we're going to still feel comfortable that we're getting the answers we need. So, SME is the third one we're waiting for. Their person that does that was on vacation, so they're working on that. And we're hoping we have it this week so that we can slide it in maybe at committee next, next week, yeah. For you guys to consider with the, because the material testing will be there also.
Okay, thank you.
Officer, do you have any questions?
That was it.
Commissioner Duckham.
I'd like to preface my statement that I'm not completely stupid. I, I try to be practical, okay? It seemed to me like a wise investor would buy these ten houses or eleven houses, move the people out that's having problems, fill the basements in, and her on resell them. It wouldn't cost you but about a million bucks to do that instead of, we're looking at four to nine, four to eight.
Mr. Overton.
Uh, I would just, I, I agree with you frankly about that. What I would tell you is that what we're doing is not for those properties. It, we, we make no claim that this will solve their problems with basement water. What we're doing is, this has opened up a larger can, if you will, and with the lagoons and the golf course and runoff and all that sort of thing. It's only a matter of time, what was it, ten years ago, they had been looking at dredging. They had got a permit from Eagle, I think, to dredge, but the money wasn't there to do it, so they, they didn't do it. We're back to that, if you will, for evaluating the lagoons, dredging and, you know, dealing with the golf course issue all the way across. There's an overall much larger problem than that problem. We could do that and that, and from my perspective, if that really were the solution for those property owners, that's a city should be doing that, because those are city, they're in the city limits. That should be the city.
Well, I can argue that.
That should be the city stepping up and taking. That should be the city stepping up and taking, helping their residents right there do that, we as a county are looking at the much larger issue, we have a huge asset park golf course there that is not what it used to be, is what I'm, the way I'm told, and it's only, it's gonna continue to sediment, load, fill in, and next thing you know, there won't be a lagoon there, it'll just be a wetland, I believe, is really what it comes down to, or, or greenfield, which is what it was before the Cascade was ever constructed, that was not a pond.
Right.
It was just wet.
Just that well-played football, right?
It is, and it's just trying to return to what it once was, is the way I'm explaining to me, and if we wanted to remain a viable lagoon where you could literally paddleboard or something on it, or fish, open water, if you will, we're gonna have to do something, that's what this is about.
Then it come back to the problem that we don't have the money.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And I'm getting the feeling from the public with the jail millage and the 911 and a couple other projects, uh, they're not so much, I don't know, they're not willing, I don't think they have the money to pay any more increases, and I won't vote for more funding to get, vote in the general public.
I know we are, we have, we'll continue to reach out to the state, they have, as, as was indicated, Mike Churchy was good with that one million dollars, that's what's funding the work we're doing now, where hopefully there'll be some additional dollars to help us manage this project, but again, there's no guarantees, and that's something ultimately the board will have to decide upon, what, if anything, we're gonna do, but we will make that decision based on scientific data and appropriate engineering study, so you guys can make an informed, educated decision, one way or the other.
Okay, thank you. I take that back, I am stupid.
Duly noted, Mr. Barrett. We'll strike that from the record.
Got it.
Thank you for the presentation, and, well, I'm sure we're gonna be hearing a lot more going forward.
We will, yeah, that kind of money, we'll hear a lot.
And then we're moving on to item nine, which is the Jackson County Department of Transportation, County Farm, Spring Ford or Improvement Project, and Jackson Technology Park North.
All right, so I'm gonna take this one, Debbie was going to be here, and she okayed me to let you guys know, she has plans, but the company can't be here, so I'm gonna fly in and see if I can.
COVID, excuse again, oh man, COVID's everywhere.
I know, so she would do a much better job, but pleading for money, um, so we put the project out, well, first I should introduce Charlie, Charlie Briner, you guys might not have met, he has been hiding behind the scenes, so now he is a PE and is one of our senior civiles, when Joe Betts Schneider left our agency, Joe, or Charlie picked up this project and has been running with it.
Congratulations, Charlie.
I'm very grateful for him, so he did the final plan, submitted them, and it went out to bid, and unfortunately, like everything else in our life, came in over budget, thirty-three percent, I have the bid tab, I can answer any questions, Charlie's here to answer questions, but the bottom line is, you'll see the memo that Debbie wrote up that kind of outlines how much Blackman's put into it, the, the process we went through, how the EDA, the property purchase, all of that, but comes down to that one, just over one million that's needed to proceed with the project that is for County Farm Road, parts of the project. I know a lot of people say, well, JC DOT should be able to fund that, unfortunately, it's not in our budget, we did not budget a line item, and we don't have the money to be able to move forward, so Pete Hancik with Blackman, Debbie and Tim from the EDA, or, or Enterprise Group, sorry, too many acronyms, we met with Mike and kind of talked about it, and this was the only thing we saw as a, a project team that we could come to you guys asking if there's any way to consider funding that one, just over one million dollars for the project.
So, my question's probably more to Mike.
Go ahead.
Should we choose to do this, the money, I would assume, would come from reserves, and am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, it's money that's not budgeted, as Cecilia alluded to earlier, you know, the obvious is general fund, we're fully funded in general fund, and we could fund this, it'll reduce our percentage, obviously, but the other option she alluded to was the SRI fund, as you know, we have more, just recently settled with the, those townships who owed us over a million dollars, and so we have that million dollars set aside that we could use for this, and just real quick for the benefit, for outlining options, really, it's overbid if we choose to do nothing and no one, and no one else has any money to do something, what would happen is, they would probably go back, change the plans to try to reduce the cost, meaning take out whatever they gotta take out of the project, sidewalks, I don't know, gutters, something, and then go back to the EDA to see if they will continue to fund the project based on the change, and, and then resubmit, that'll take some months to do, then resubmit in the spring, back out to bid for construction, and of course, in the conversation, some of the concern was, one, would the EDA give us the six million that they've already promised if we changed the project, no guarantees there, and there is, we believe, a guarantee that inflation will continue, and that we may very well be paying close to what we're paying now for less in the spring, 'cause this project is slated to start September, oh, no, yes, well, let's lock in the bid, was September one?
Yes, we knew the budget, we gave them until Memorial Day to get the technology parks to build, the groundwork.
Okay.
And the road base then.
Okay.
And the end of the year to have.
And so the question is, you know, we think, we really don't believe that it's a really good idea to delay the project and try to reduce the scope of the project to save some money, so we're thinking that, you know, somewhere the money, you know, needs to come from, and you can see from Blackman's perspective, I've spoke to Pete, of course, about this, as well as some other Blackman representation, and their position is, they, they put in, county hasn't put in any, they are actually paying for our JDOT engineers to design the project, it's not on our dime, they are paying for that, Blackman Township is paying that, it's in Blackman Township.
Well, to be fair.
Yes.
Captured millage funds from the county have paid that.
Well, it's more than just the county's captured money, but yes.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's an LDF.
No.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, there's all, it's just one more tax capturing entity.
The match funds is from their water and sewer, so.
They're putting in.
LDFA pay.
Water and sewer funds there.
They're pushing on that, yeah.
But.
Holy crap.
They've got millions, they got over three million into it, right?
Yep.
And, and the EDA is six million, and they're looking at us for a million, a little over a million, so.
Overall, I think this would be good for Jackson County, and it would create tax base solely through time.
Jobs.
The county would, and jobs for the community, but also from a fiscal standpoint, in the long run, the county would recoup this money, a very long.
In the long run, yes, well, you know, here's the thing about economic development, frequently, government, all across the nation, gives away the farm to get somebody to build.
Yeah.
But at the same time, the, the promise is that they're gonna add jobs, those people are gonna buy houses or build houses and so forth and so on, and add to the vibrancy of our economic, of our community, that's where we get our money.
I totally understand that, so my question is, simply put, has anybody examined what the Blackman LDFA has in their bank account before we expend county funds, you know, I'd like to know, are they sitting on a lot of money, 'cause this is their project, it's, to be fair, it's not a county project, it's, it's their project, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but I would like to know the financial situation involved, because if they're sitting on money, it should be expended.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Snell.
I'd like to make sure we understand, this is not necessarily a Blackman Township project, this is a Jackson Technology Park, this is gonna benefit all of Jackson.
I agree.
It's not, it's not the Blackman Technology Park, it's the Jackson Technology Park, I know that there are several companies ready to move in right now, and if we can't make this ready to go, they're gonna leave the community, they're gonna be gone, we're gonna lose those jobs, we're gonna lose that, lose that tax base, so I think it moves us to really look at this, and, and, and funding doesn't have to happen this year, and we could, we could agree to it over a certain amount of years, a couple of years maybe, because that, what Blackman's looking is for certainty that there'll be funding available to get this project done.
Commissioner Pulaski.
And I, I agree, I don't think anybody disagrees with the value of the project, the issue is that it's unplanned and it's county general fund dollars, and that's a problem from my perspective, is there a way for us to lend this money to someone, the LFA, LFA or whoever, and be repaid in future for the monies we would be expected to spend now? Because, because LDFAs are tax captures, okay, they're taking some of, frankly, ours and other tax organizations' dollars, we, if we can fund it and then get paid back, is there any way to do that?
I, I have to look closer at that with an attorney, I can tell you, last, we talked about the county's ability to loan money, it was very, made very clear to us legally that we are not a bank, we cannot loan money, can, you know, is there some exception, and with this kind of project, I'm not sure, we can, we can make inquiry into that.
I guess what I'm saying is, have it be some way that we can get the work done that we're saying needs to get done without it being, without it being a complete drain on our general fund dollars?
Sure.
That's the question.
Along with, I would like to know what that LFA has in their, in their.
All I know for that is Black, they are picking up the overage, the one point four, one point four, and they're talking about taking a loan for that.
Okay.
I do not believe they have money to fund.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, we will have the definitive answer by our committee, I'm sure Pete or somebody could tell us, he'll probably be there.
I saw someone's hand, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so we have, so tell me this, just so I can be clear, as we know, this is a, a county road, okay, so JC DOT has the responsibility to, to fix the county roads as they have the budget to do that, and so if I, if I remember correctly, when we discussed, when we discussed roads some time ago, essentially, the JC DOT builds a timeline based off of dollars available, et cetera, so why can't we just do that with this?
So the, the improvements that are happening for this is because of the expansion for the development, so typically if a developer came in, we'd require them to do that, so it's not to maintain our system, it's from the feasibility study that was done a few years ago that we partnered with Blackman on, for them to develop this park, you have to have that signal there, you have to have the added turn lanes to handle the capacity of that, so it's nothing that JC DOT would fund, road resurfacing portions, we would do, but that's not on this project, this is all added capacity because of a development. The only thing JC DOT could do is potentially go after grants where most of it's covered, and we pay the, the match fund for that, but that, there's no promise to that, there's not a accident, a history of accidents out there, to be able to get safety grants to improve the intersection, so we could go after that, there's just no promise to when, how much.
Sure, well, any dollar amount would help, and I guess my last question, yeah, so I guess my last question would be, if we have potential developers that are looking to move into this area, what dollar amount would they be paying?
You mean for this?
For the project, yeah.
They would.
Did you mention?
They can't, so the whole point of getting this grant was to make it a site-ready development, so.
But we don't have individuals that are currently looking to the area.
They have potential buyers, but they can't pass the cost on to them.
That's the incentive to these companies.
Oh, two. Sounds like a lenient way.
So.
It's, it's, it's no different than a home development, I mean, you build a subdivision, the developer pays for the cost for the subdivision.
Darius was finishing his point before you started having a conversation, let Darius finish.
No, I, I appreciate that, Tony, but I, I think I.
I thought you were, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Um, now I don't remember my point, so.
So I, I guess I'm just struggling with, maybe this could be next point, I'm, I'm struggling with funding this, because I understand we wanna make it beautiful, just for lack of a better term, so that individuals will move in, but I was under the impression that when we have individuals that are going to move into the area, that they have a certain responsibility to pay a certain amount of dollars to, to help beautify it, so to speak, so in this case, I guess I'm struggling in why they're, we're not asking for those potential dollars, or, or is it that they have not confirmed that they will do the area?
It's tied to the grant that we got, that we wrote, the almost five point nine, five point nine million dollars that we're getting from the EDA is a grant that is to develop this site so that people, buyers can just come in and build, so the grant is doing what you're talking about, yes, typically in an industrial park, I think that's how it's done.
Okay.
But we went after this grant to prevent them from having to do it, to make it more of a.
Yeah, I'm.
I would tell you that this is not unusual, this is normal from a, an industrial park-type development situation, you build it and then you sell your parcels off to the companies that come in, that's what they do, and sometimes they give them away, because they're looking at the long-term greater good in the community for jobs, and as, I think, as Commissioner Snell pointed out, there are some companies in our county that made it very clear, they need to expand, they're expanding somewhere, they're expanding here, or they're gonna expand in some other place where they do have the property and the infrastructure to support their needs, is that, that simple?
Were there, did any other commissioners have questions, 'cause I did have one, okay, I'm gonna let Rodney go, the man that's gotta ask a question all day.
I noticed the, the scope of your work here, for, for JDOT to, to get into, is it basically the roadways?
For JDOT to, why are we involved, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Uh, so we were, it started with Blackman, Enterprise Group, and the county wrote the grant, JC DOT, because we have an engineering team, or the consultants on it, we wouldn't be involved if we weren't doing the engineering.
I believe we had to write the grant.
The county general.
Yes.
But as far as the one million dollar part, what, what is that, what is that gonna do?
That covers the overage for construction, so the one thing I did point out, which was surprising to us, it's not HMA, this is, the reason it's over is really dirt with, and then the, the pipe system for the sanitary and utilities, but, yeah, so it could build the infrastructure for it, the HMA was within a couple dollars on one of the mixes and five dollars on another, so the items that we know, we estimated pretty good on.
What I was wondering, yes, is if we could delay our portion a little bit, you know, let the rest of the project go on, and if we come in and did driveways and roads and things like that, way toward the tail end of the project, so that, or maybe even after some buildings, you know, and come back and do it later, you know, just kind of delay it.
So I wondered if you know that, Commissioner Snell talked about that too, so the key to this is, we can't delay, we have to do what is in the scope of the grant, period, everything that we wrote in there, the signal being installed, the.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer, the development of, yeah, the sidewalk, everything that was wrote in there has to be done, for them to give us the million dollars, and it has to be a commitment now, you can't delay it for a couple of years, as the project progresses with construction, we have to do the progress payments, JC DOT will have to, and then we have to be reimbursed by the grant or Blackman for the match, or in the situation that the county's doing the, the overage, then for the construction costs of that, we'll bill immediately to get it back to our bank account.
Commissioner Walls, are you okay with, Commissioner Bear?
Thank you, I'm disappointed in some of the stuff I'm hearing.
I'm disappointed in some of the stuff I'm hearing. The money that the county received from the SRI settlement just got squirreled away in some secret account somewhere and that we can now go access that money? Why was that not put into the general fund? And how do we, how do we receive a million from SRI settlements that the money just is not acknowledged? It's, it's just hidden over here and, oh, here's a project. Okay, now we can spend it. How does that happen?
I, I don't think that's the case. We just received it, first of all, through court. And then, not court, but they, they ended up settling. And Leoni just paid it not long ago. I think they paid a second installment, haven't they, or no? No.
Leoni paid it all.
Leoni paid it all.
But with the payments that they've made, where's the money going? Cookie jar.
Um, would you care?
It goes in the general fund. Pretty straightforward. The money, there's no secret accounts or hidden accounts. It goes in general fund. And it might go in general fund and set aside into capital, you know. But it's still all the money that you guys see regularly.
So the, so the money has been there. The prosecutor's request being denied, I, I'm.
Well, let's, we want to stick to this project. If you've got questions about this project, we can talk about the prosecutor at a different time.
Okay. I will. Commissioner comments?
That's fine.
On this project, taking money out of reserves, I question the wisdom of that. We get a great interest rate on loans. Other entities in the county, the schools, as I've been told, if they can, I don't know how it may happen, but if they can get the lower interest rate that the county has generated, but having a good reserve, that helps out other entities. So we gotta be careful where we take reserves out of. We don't want to lower that too much. Does, does JDOT's schedule allow for this? Is this something you have programmed previously?
The project?
Yeah. Okay, so does your current schedule, I mean, you've got projects underway and others scheduled throughout the entire county. Is this going to impact your ability to complete those other projects? How much impact is it gonna have?
It wouldn't impact our projects because JC DOT's not funding it.
They're not doing that work.
We're not doing the work either. A contract.
So your personnel and your materials and your equipment would not be used on this?
Yeah, we can't do force accounting. They know the law. Force accounting is when JC DOT crews do the work with a, a federal grant. We can't do that. It has to be without.
So what entity would actually be doing, be doing the actual construction?
The low bidder is Mead Brothers.
So Mead Brothers would do all the scope of work?
I mean, they have subcontractors, but yeah, they're the prime contractors.
All right. Okay. The, the letter that came to us was from the Enterprise Group. I've got a question. Was it 2012? Pardon me?
Would they purchase the property?
No. Was it 2012 when the staff of the Enterprise Group embezzled, I guess is the word, embezzled money from the Enterprise Group? Were caught doing it. So my question is, has it, have the staff that embezzled it ever been forced to return all of the money?
That was in 2003 and '04.
Three and four?
And then embezzlement. I came into that board on the tail end of it.
Okay, again, we're, we're straying way off topic. We need, we need to stay on the focus of this project. So if you have any questions or comments to that, please speak to that.
No, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Snell, did you?
You know, I, I'd like us to think about, too, as being maybe some creative financing here. Would they need the Blackman LDFA unit upfront? Could it be paid over a certain amount of years to lessen the impact?
So it's not them that needs it. It's JC DOT. So as, if the board chooses to work with the low bidder, Mead Brothers at committee, or at full board, then we'll move forward with the contract. And as construction progresses, we have bi-week repayments that we have to make. So in whatever amount of construction they do, we pay. And then we would submit reimbursement from everybody.
Another thing we could do maybe is to negotiate with the Blackman LDFA corporation that cashed in.
That was my question. I'm glad you moved to that.
They could do that. They have, it looks like they, they have a hundred thousand dollars. It's a money for distribution right now.
Yeah, I think we discussed that at the meeting, but I don't remember.
Possibly some of the captured funds coming back to the county for time.
And I haven't talked to Pete about any of those.
We've talked about that when we met at JC DOT, didn't we? But I can't remember his answer.
You know, I think it's imperative that this, you know, that we seriously consider this project because, you know, Jackson's been a ton of development. Big with some good paying jobs. But I really want to look into that. First of all, they would gather, it sounds like it's legal and that could happen. And secondly, if Blackman would be willing to do that. Because that would make the county taxpayers whole in about 10 years.
So the question is if Blackman can give back some tax capture?
Yes.
We can, we can.
Through time.
Yeah.
Well, they can. They don't, just like any, any levy that we do, we can decide not to levy the whole amount. We don't have to capture the whole amount. Now, as we know, the library always captures that. They always hunt out.
So if we can explore that by, you know, the next meetings where we're moving forward, I would appreciate that greatly.
So have those answers by the committee that will go to committee?
Yeah, I mean, I know you're, that's pushing time, but.
I think.
It's gotta be done by September 2nd or else, right?
Yeah, this is, we have to do it this month. And I think Pete and, Pete and Edie, you know, EG can answer the question.
Okay.
I, I think it would be wise to maybe, we have unplanned revenue that come in from the SRI. Yet it's general fund money. Maybe we could dedicate that to this project contingent upon re being repaid part of it with the, with the captured money, tax money. We'll do a two-way deal.
I know, we, we will need to talk to Blackman obviously about that. And, and my plan was to talk to Pete anyway, but I don't want to stop on administration toes. And, you know, if we want to do it together, I'm open to that. Whatever we want to do, be happy to be a part of that.
Is the bonds paid off for the SRI completely? How much do we need to do debt retirement on that?
We don't. The settlement was that they would pay us what they owed us and then they would pay the bonds going forward. They have a commitment of that with their new association. We still have Liberty and Hanover Township who are, and the settlement are making payments to the county.
Well, I just don't know how to settle short on that, that retirement.
Okay. Commissioner Barry had another question?
This is gonna be coming up at committee.
Yes.
I guess at that point, I would like a recommendation on what's the source of this money? Where's this coming from? And what's the proposal on where the money is coming from? Ideas tossed out. I'd like to see that.
So you'd like to see that come from the recommendation from JC DOT? You would like to see that on the?
From JC DOT or from the administration? JC DOT is asking us and the administration, find a million dollars for us. So I want to know where's that million coming from?
Okay.
To be fair, Blackman and the Economic Development Group are the ones asking where's the money for you.
Yes. Thank you for that mention.
I know, I agree.
You are correct.
All right, so a lot of research is gonna have to happen here in less than a, a week, but I think we can get it done and, and we'll talk further on Monday during committee. Everyone good? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll see you Monday. All right. That takes us to the second opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Bormuth?
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. With regard to growing jobs and technology and new companies in Jackson County. In 1997, the University of Michigan issued a directive to its researchers and professors encouraging them to spin off companies from their research, to commercialize, in other words, their research. And there have been a score of successful companies that have been created through that process. Jackson County has not got a single one of them. So what I'd like to know is why there hasn't been more outreach to, you know, high-tech jobs that are being created 30 miles from here when we have cheaper property taxes? We have cheaper property. We have access to the same educated workforce that's sitting 30 miles away. And we haven't got a single company out of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comment? Last chance for public comment. Public comment is closed. Takes us to item 11A in accordance with MCL 15.26A, collective bargaining agreement negotiations. We will be going into closed sessions should someone make a motion to do so.
So much.
Support moved by Duckham, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. We will, where are we heading? Head to six. Looking for a motion.
I would move to ratify the tentative agreement reached in Jackson County Employees' Chapter of Local 2098. Affiliated with Michigan Council Number 25, asked me for a new collective bargaining agreement for the period of August 9, 2022 through December 31, 2024. And authorize the board chair to sign the successor collective bargaining agreements on approval as to form by the county's legal council.
Support, supported by Duckham. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Pulaski?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Chairman Kennedy?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bear?
Do I get to vote?
Oh, Commissioner Bear. I apologize.
Yes.
Wonderful. Takes us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Snell?
Yeah, um, what happened this weekend should concern us all.
Would you explain what happened?
What happened?
I've been too busy to listen to the news.
Yeah, wow. The FBI enforced, went into Mar-a-Lago looking for, with search warrants, searching for god knows what. Safes were open without separate search warrants, which are usually required. And, and it, it, we, we talked about the decline of democracy. And, and that is a big one. The other concern is the, the army of IRS agents that have just been authorized by our federal government to, to harass people for more money. When our home lethally talks about, we could get up to a trillion dollars more by squeezing. Well, where, where are they gonna squeeze? It's not me. It's not you. It's not Bill Gates. It's gonna be those who make $50,000 or under. Those are the people that will be audited. They're gonna be looking at their earned income credit, whether they're actually eligible or not. And these are numbers that are being used right now. Those percentages of people who are getting audited. But, you know, this is a board. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. But I, I just wanted to say that this bothers me tremendously. Especially when we have evidence of other political leaders having, and I won't be critical because nobody's been arrested or convicted yet, but some shady dealings going on for years. That's all I can say about it.
Commissioner Snell? Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
I'd dovetail on Commissioner Snell's comment. Set to high school economics, and I don't know how, this is called a deficit inflation reduction plan. We're gonna print more money to pay down our debt so we don't have inflation. We're gonna print more money. Banana Republic.
Thank you. Commissioner Bear?
At our July 18, 2022 Public Security and Transportation Committee meeting, agenda item for our Assistant Drain Commissioner request. You'll go into your computers, bring up that meeting, bring up that agenda item. There's a box shows up. So there was a motion made and there was a vote taken. The motion to forward the Drain Commissioner's request to the administrator failed. So there was no official movement. There was no official recommendation to have the administration negotiate something or oppose something on the Drain Commissioner. I encourage every one of you, don't believe a word I just said. Go look at a, open up those meetings.
Commissioner Bear? If my memory is correct, it didn't fail because Commissioner Shotwell became the tie-breaking vote.
That's not in the minutes. If you go into those minutes, I don't believe Shotwell was there at the time. Go into those minutes and the box comes up, you scroll down to the end of that agenda item. It says, "Motion failed." Am I correct?
Tony, yes. And that's an error on my part. That's an error on my part.
What's the correction? What, what should have been correct?
Shotwell was the tie-breaking vote. And he, and he said that vocally in the meeting. Which he has the right to do anytime there's a time. He's done it on other items too.
He did say it because I heard him.
I'm going based on what's in the.
Yep, she's, she's acknowledging it. It's clerical error.
And I will personally review that video and make sure it is corrected today.
Well, shame on you for not coming with the lack of 20 years' experience.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on this a little bit further.
Okay.
Denying the prosecutor the staff he needs is not hurting the prosecutor. It's hurting the public. It's hurting the victims in this county. So by not providing our prosecutor with what he says is the proper staffing to do his job well, well, the accused, the intelligent Defense Commission keeps getting more and more staff, more and more money. So the accused are very well represented. The prosecutor represents the citizens, represents particularly the victims. So when you withhold money from the prosecutor, you are withholding money from the victims. That doesn't sit well with me. The victims deserve better. The victims deserve this board to reconsider that.
Why don't sit well with me is a shoddy job Jerry's doing.
Pardon me?
Why doesn't sit well with me is the shoddy job Jerry Jazika is doing in his department? I talked to you after the meeting about that.
We can all have our opinions on how well he's doing his job. But when he comes here and says, "I need more people." The purpose of it is to protect the citizens, then I think we need to give it to him.
Well, part of our job as commissioners is to weigh the requests from every department, including his.
Good.
And, and to decide whether or not that is in fact the case. If we were to just take the word of every department head that they need more staff and he could prove it.
That's done?
Well, no.
So if Commissioner comments?
Sheriff, if you can bring those minutes up again, or if you still have them.
Which minutes are you referring to?
The July. The July eighteen Public Safety and Transportation Committee, um, that's where you say the minutes, as they are at the moment, are not correct. That that mission, uh, was passed when Shotwell joined the vote?
Correct.
Is, is that, is that correct?
Is your question?
He's asking about the meeting where Shotwell became the tiebreaker.
Drain Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, if we're, if we're going through this new industrial park, um, that's more work for the Drain Commissioner. Um, every department needs to be reasonably staffed. And I know some people have told me their, one of their complaints is that when they have gone up to the fourteenth floor, is Drain Commissioner on the fourteenth floor? I forget. Anyway, when people have gone up to the floor where the Drain Commissioner's offices are, the office has been locked. There's only a staff of two. And if the Drain Commissioner is out doing work, and the other staff person has to go work with, uh, go look up deeds, there's about four, three, at least three other agencies within this building that the staff have to go to to look up records. The staff can't go downstairs to look up deeds if they're out on Elm Road. They need to stay. Um, I still, you know, not being able to walk into the Drain Commissioner's office, 'cause the door's locked, is no big deal to me. That happens in many departments. Finance locks their door when they have to go someplace in the building. When there's just one lady staff member in the office, yeah, it's reasonable to me. Lock the darn door. Many departments do that. So, to use that as justification to, I'll use the word punish, the Drain Commissioner, um, that's just not appropriate in my book. The, uh, the amount of staff needed, if we're gonna add more projects like this Blackman project, um, Drain Commissioner's gonna need more people. I don't see how he can get by with the staff level he's at. And, I miss my point. When people have gone to the Drain Commissioner's office and the door's been locked. Well, yesterday, I could move to the building. I wanted to go to the sixth floor. Push the button. No, I can't go. So, the regular citizen walking in wanting to go to the sixth floor, the administration, they can't get there. So, every citizen in this county is not allowed to go to the sixth floor. I was able to get there because I took my badge and I swiped it, and I could get to the sixth floor. The sixth floor, to me, is more important than the Drain Commissioner's floor. We complain that the Drain Commissioner's office is locked, but yet the administrator's, administrator's office is locked because I can't push a button and get to the sixth floor. So, if we're gonna think poorly of the Drain Commissioner because people can't get to his floor, then what do we think about people that can't get to the sixth floor? Citizens that, for whatever reason, wanna go there. So, I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, and somebody told me, "Well, ninety percent of the people that come into the building go to other departments." So, so what? Take care of the ten percent. If ten, if ten percent or of the citizens that come in the building wanna go to the sixth floor, we'd better let them get there. Or we punish the sixth floor like we punish the Commissioner's floor because people, because they're not accessible. So, to reject one department's proposal because they're not accessible, um, that's just, that's just a contradiction.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna bring these, I'm gonna bring these two up over and over again. Every time we spend money that's not budgeted, I'm gonna bring the Commissioner and the prosecutor up again. We need to treat those people better. They're elected officials, and this group of elected officials shouldn't be shitting on them.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comment? Seeing now, I'd be looking for a mission to, or a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Walls, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. We're adjourned.